Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to apply the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice is forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 22, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're on to special events applications.
Good evening, Mayor Council. There are six applications before you. Just one of them is new, and the new one is the first Friday of the month, Art and Music, which will be held in the Transportation Center. That would be beginning in September 6, the first Friday through December. And the other applications are returning with no changes from previous years. Any questions?
So, Lisha, who's putting on the first Friday?
That's Cassandra, Cultural Arts Committee.
Perfect. Just wanted to get that out there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now on to items to be presented. We have a presentation by Harry Delgado, who's the Program Director of New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. This is a reaccreditation certi-- Harry?
I came here tonight to recognize the police department because they have actually reached a reaccreditation for the second time. And I emphasize that because it's very important. Out of all the agencies in the state of New Jersey that would be eligible to apply for accreditation, about 54% have made it once, about 32% have made it two times. Of those that have made it twice in terms of accreditation, we're in a very exclusive group of less than 4% of all the agencies in the state of New Jersey that have made that commitment to act as a police, and that is to adhere to best practices. So if you indulge me for two minutes, even though I've done this several times, I don't know your part, I'd like to share with you the significance of the achievement. So the Asbury Park Police Department have once again made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level in a highly regoed state-wide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered to the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission ourselves to transparently demonstrate the professionalism of the preparedness of the state's law enforcement agencies. It is purposefully designed to enhance professionalism and transparency in the state's policy safety system. I would agree that during these challenging times and the threat to our health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standard practices and policies is a potential lifesaving and prospective investment for time and resources. Creation gives an agency a preparedness plan and verification of excellence. And I won't go into detail just to simply tell you that in the state of New Jersey, there are 112 standards, and out of those may require multiple proofs of compliance. It's perhaps over 400. So it's a very labor-intensive process that actually owes the agency accountable to us, our de-crediting body, and to you, our de-governing body. I just, before I close, I want to paraphrase some of what was said in that before, that the end of those three years, we'll have an onsite assessment, and basically, we come here and we try to look for items that are not compliant. I must say that in the case of the Asbury Police Department, we didn't find any, which is, you know, it's a rarity. So that's completely remarkable. So I like to say that the leadership of Chief Guy Thompson, high-level competence leadership professionalism is evident with the agency. This is evident in the over 12 initiatives that they currently consider, that I choose, are currently under consideration for future, are future reasons for the agency. These range from continued adherence to best practices, to the welfare of their own employees, officers, and staff, to community engagement, and certainly, technology. I think that that's remarkable. That's what we consider having a strategic plan. So it is the opinion of the assessment, too, that the Asbury Park Police Department is a highly professional community agency, which exemplifies some of the tenets of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. What is indeed my honor here tonight, on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, congratulate Chief Guy Thompson, Federation Manager Michael Casey, the members of the Asbury Park Police Department, the mayor, the council, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving their second reaccreditation, joining a very, very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that have made that commitment to act as a police. So to all indeed, congratulations. This is where you get the glad feeling, police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, you want to say it?
Well.
Yeah.
Only that, obviously, it takes teamwork. The officers have to buy in. It takes a lot of extra money that the city is paying for to make this happen, as far as, like, technology and stuff. We, in order to implement these things, we push this out. Again, the officers have to buy in, they have to follow these policies, and that's where we get the proofs for the accreditation standards. Mike did a lot of hard work with this, Sergeant Casey. I think he deserves a round of applause for anything. [applause] I do want to thank the Mayor Council. We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just want to-- Mark Dietrich here actually helps a lot, too. So he actually makes sure-- it's important for him, he keeps us in check when our things too. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Guy. Thank you, Harry. We're now on to our presentation by our municipal auditor, David Gannon, from PKF O'Connor Dades, and our CFO, Joanne Booth, of the 2023 Municipal Audit.
It's already on, David.
Sorry, I'm sorry. So, good evening, everybody.
Arrow right.
Arrow right. The arrow's not working.
Arrow's not working. All right, we'll start off.
Awesome. Thanks. You want to try it like that? So it just arrowed to the right. You just can't do it full swing.
Got it. All right, good evening, everybody. So just to go through the annual audit for the past year, 2023. First, I always like to recognize the staff of the city, because, you know, we come in for about four weeks during the audit, we request a lot of information. So their daily routines are disruptive, obviously, and we always appreciate their cooperation and professionalism throughout the audit. This audit has been filed in accordance with the statutory deadline. This year, we're here a little bit early, the last five years or so, because of the effects of COVID. The statutory deadline's been extended each year, to either August 31st or September 30th. This year, you know, as we move out of COVID, back to June 30th. So we have filed the report in accordance with the deadline, statutory deadline. Just some brief objectives of, you know, what our objectives are for the audit, because sometimes there's different audits, forensic, operational, but, you know, we're being engaged to do a financial statement audit. So we're auditing the financial statements to make sure they're accorded with the requirements of the Division of Local Governance Services. One of the other items that we have to do, because of the federal and state funding that you receive, is that we have to also do our audit in accordance with the government auditing standards, and that requires a separate report to those charter of governance. And if there's any significant items that we would need to report, those would be communicated in writing in that report. In addition, because of the level of federal funding, we're also required to perform a specific federal compliance in order. So we look at internal controls and compliance, and we provide an actual opinion on whether the city complied with that. We have certain standards that we have to follow. There's auditing standards generally set in the United States. There's audit requirements prescribed by government auditing standards, which is issued by the Comptroller General of the United States, as well as federal uniform guidance. And, you know, sometimes, not very widely known, but us as auditors, we're also audited. We're required to have a peer review done by another accounting firm every three years to review our work papers and processes, as well as internal inspections by other partners in my offices. Look at our engagements every year to make sure, again, we're following appropriate standards. As far as the audit results regarding the city's financial statements, we've issued an unmodified opinion in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting. So unmodified meaning a clean opinion. The city's following all the requirements from a financial standard perspective that the Division prescribes. We found the financial records overall in excellent condition. We didn't have any issues in which the city was not able to provide us support, supporting those balances and transactions. All that information was provided, and we found that the city overall is in strong financial position. The current fund and fund balance at the end of the year was $11 million, compared to $10.70 the year before. And again, you have to remember that, you know, part of using, you use fund balance every year to balance the budget, you know, and in 2023, it was about $6.3 million. But the city was also able to have other revenues restore that fund balance amounts in order to continue to use it in subsequent years. Misread revenue on anticipated, $2.4 million. Prior appropriations that had not been spent, that lapsed, of $2.70. Then overall, from a budget perspective, there was $1.8 million of revenues that exceeded budget amounts. And all of that kind of assists in rebuilding that $6.3 million that was utilized as part of the budget process for 2023. The city has three utility funds. The first one, the sewer utility fund, the fund balance was $6.5 million at the end of the year, an increase over the $3.8 from the prior year. For several years, the sewer utilities' fund balance was rather low. Some of the debt service was paid off. That's kind of made the sewer utility fund, fund balance higher than the prior years. Also, the sewer connection fees in 2023 were a little over $2 million. The beach utility fund's fund balance was $7.9 million, an increase of about $900,000. These fees were about $1 million in excess of what was anticipated in the budget. And important to note that the beach utility also contributed $700,000 to the current fund operations. The transportation, transportation utility fund balance was $15.3 million, which was fairly similar from the prior year. $3.2 million of parking fees were in excess of what was anticipated in the budget. And again, very important to note, $4.9 million was contributed to the current fund, the fund, current fund operations. Tax collection rate continues to be over 99% at 99.95. The city continues to have an accelerated tax rate each year. The net debt of the city was $41.5 million, or 1.65% of average disvaluation. Statutory limit to that is 3.5, so the city's, you know, well below the statutory limits for debt. Forty-six point five million dollars remains of, as far as bar borrowing power goes. I mentioned that we do a report in accordance with government auditing standards, you know, in that if there's any significant findings that we thought were more material weaknesses or certain deficiencies, we would communicate it there. I'm happy to report that we didn't find any such deficiencies that we thought were that significant. As I mentioned, we also did a federal single audit, and we looked at the ARP grant, we found, and CB's grant, and we found that the state was complying in all respects. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance as it relates to the federal single audit. We do do a lot of different various testing of internal controls and different statutory provisions that the state prescribes. So we do offer typically, when we do our audits, other findings, other matters, other suggestions for improvement. So in that, we've included four items that we set forth and provided as comments that were, the city's going to take corrective action on. The one was, there was one instance, so we test multiple transactions when it comes to local public contracts law, but we found one instance where an item wasn't publicly contracted at a department, and a contract was provided without public bidding. We found another instance within the financial records where a Chapter 159, where, you know, insertion of revenue expense during the year was recorded in the financial records, but that resolution did not go to the governing body for approval, and therefore, that wasn't approved by the state. It was a mishap. We found instances where purchase orders were, or orders were made without purchase orders being first established. It was considered confirming orders, or, you know, traditionally what they're called. Pretty common, common finding throughout the state. There was only two that we found, but we thought it was worth mentioning. And then just the overall compensate after the accrued sick and vacation, compensate absence leave of the police department is a very manual process, and we thought that would, you know, strengthen the integrity of the records by having an automated system, which is my understanding that the purchasing departments is preparing, or if Peter already correct that, you know, take corrective action on that. And with that, there's any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer them.
No, thank you for the report. Thank Joanne for, and her staff, for working together with you, and I would say it's not a bad audit report.
So why not?
At the public session. Any other questions?
Yeah, just have them hang.
Okay, we're good, so if you would just stick around in case the public had any questions that you might be able to answer.
Okay.
And that'll be coming right up, and then, after that.
Understood.
You can take off.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There would be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Yeah, we should probably mention that. That, you know, just, it should be mentioned that this, the audit report is on the county, on the city website, if you would like to see it. It's in PDF form, correct, David?
Yeah, it's not a writing document.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. Read them around my way, they're on you. One of them is, I didn't hear what the bonded indebtedness was of the city, that's number one. And number two, do you look at all the compensation time, too, when you do the report? How many people get compensation, sick leave, and vacation? Those are two questions.
So it was on one of the slides, but maybe I went through two quick. The net debt of the city, so that's a little bit different, that doesn't include the toll debt, because it's not included in the statutory calculation. The net debt of the city was $41.5 million, or 1.6% of three-year average equalized value. And in the statute, 3.5% is the limit.
3% what?
Of average equalized valuation. All right, so the city's 2% under the maximum allowed, that allows them 46.5 million additional borrowing power. All right, and then, as far as your second question goes, do you perform tests of control or compensation and related items? It's not 100% testing, it's random sampling, and then, you know, we can ensure that those samples, the salaries are being paid in accordance with the order, but the bargaining agreement. But again, this is a financial standard, it's a forensic one or operational. Those scopes and objectives are different.
What? That?
That's it.
Because that's kind of a loose operation. People write after home sick, they used to, I don't know if that's still the way it is. But anyway, I, the other thing I wanted to ask you about was, being you don't do a thorough study of that, don't you think you should? There's a lot of money in, you know, there. We had a problem with that years ago, where people were getting money after they left. So I don't know, that's, I know that's been corrected, but it wasn't in an audit. And by the way, how many pages is the audit? It's very hard to read on the computer. Can we get a hard copy?
Yes, browse.
Thank you.
So 194.
Carrie Butch, 500 Del Lake Drive. Can you tell me the public contract that was awarded that should have been publicly announced? Can you tell me that contract? Who received the contract, and how much was it for?
I think it was Kivit's joint.
It was through the UEZ. I want to say it was about $64,000.
Yeah.
And I think the company that got it was Kivit.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It was related to Made in Asbury Park. Remember the event, Made in Asbury Park, at the Berkeley?
So you have no other questions, motion to close?
Move to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave, thank you.
We're now on to the minutes. I've had the executive meeting and regular meeting minutes of the July 17 meeting. May I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2024-366 through 2024-370 and 2024-380. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2024-371, Resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-372, Resolution authorizing a professional services contract with TNM Associates for Professional Engineering Design and Construction Administration and Inspection Services at First Avenue Roadway Improvements.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-373, Resolution authorizing execution of a shared services agreement with Eaton Town Sewerage Authority for Technical Rescue Services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-374, Resolution requesting permission for the dedication by Ryder for lead-based paint and inspection services required by NJSA 52:27D-437.16.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-375, Resolution adopting a corrective action plan in response to the recommendations contained in the 2023 Report of Audit and Summary of Prior Year Findings and Recommendations.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-376, Resolution accepting the 2023 Municipal Audit.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-377, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a redevelopment agreement with Asbury Avenue Owners LLC regarding a mixed-use project on property located at 1012 Asbury Avenue identified on the city tax map as Block 501 Lots 1 and 2.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-378, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a financial agreement with the Asbury Avenue Owners LLC for an HMFA tax exemption for the mixed-use project on property located at 1012 Asbury Avenue identified on the city tax map as Block 501 Lots 1 and 2.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2024-379, Resolution authorizing appointments to the Asbury Park TV Committee. The appointee is Danielle Bullock, with a term to expire January 15, 2027.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-381, Resolution authorizing Union County Cooperative Pricing System Membership.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-382, Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Asbury Park acting as redevelopment entity authorizing a temporary cellular installation on the property located at Block 4104, Lot 13. This is 210 Fifth Avenue, within the waterfront redevelopment area.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2024-27, Ordinance establishing restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons in the City of Asbury Park along Grand Avenue and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicapped Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, with a public hearing date of August 14, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to second reading of ordinances, public hearings. This is ordinance 2024-25, Ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons in the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicapped Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. So, brief overview of this ordinance at the request of a resident. The request of this handicap parking space was reviewed, verified, and approved by our Transportation Director, James Manano, and the Police Department. This handicap parking space will be located in front of 510 Sewell Avenue, which is located 209 feet east of the southeast corner of Sewell Avenue and Grand Avenue. May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2024-25? Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-25 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please state your name and address for the record, use the microphone. Your comments may be regarding ordinance 2024-25 only.[1749.62]
One second. Well, Peter Plants, good evening to all. I'm laughing because it's kind of synopsis.
Your name and address, sir, I'm sorry. Your name and address.
Peter Plants, 4 Pine Tree Lane, Manalup, New Jersey.
Peter?
Plants.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. Basically, we need help on this rent levelling issue.
Okay, sir.
We are just 20.
Sir, I'm sorry, your comments may be regarding this ordinance only. This is a public hearing on a handicapped parking space.
Do I get to speak at any time?
That had just passed, that was the public portion, where Rita just spoke.
That passed over, so I won't be able to speak anymore?
The public participation portion was open, and then no one else spoke after the two people spoke, so we closed that portion, so.
Close, so I can't speak tonight? You don't want to hear my?
Junkies.
My grievance or anything? It's on the right leg.
Okay, correct.
I can read my little synopsis for you?
You can leave it with us, and we'll get back to you tomorrow.
No, 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 you got to hear me. You raised my taxes 40%. And then you, come on, you got to hear me out.
We opened the public portion, and.
Oh, I'm a little hard of hearing, so there's no acceptance, I got to come back next month, right?
Two weeks.
Is that what you want me to do?
Two weeks.
I see the cooperation here. I even don't know.
Meanwhile, you can leave it with us.
No, I don't want to leave it with you, I'm going to tell it to you.
Okay.
Since you don't have time for me, three minutes, right? Three minutes, every one of your lives.
Right, sir.
You don't have time.
The public participation is closed. It's not ridiculous, sir, they have the public.
It is. Three minutes.
I just have a question about the handicap.
Go ahead.
If you're talking to public handicap, do you have to pay?
If you're.
You know, like on the beach.
If you have a handicap placard, I believe not.
You do not. No?
Correct. John Wright, correct.
Correct. Because a lot of people don't know that, that they're handicapped, like me.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing on 2024-25 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt 2024-25?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now into ordinance 2024-26. This is bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various vehicles and capital equipment appropriating $3,975,000 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $3,776,250 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the City of Esberry Park in the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey. Our CFO, Joanne Booth, will provide a brief overview of this ordinance.
This is to buy various vehicles and equipment for our fire department, IT department, police and DPW.
Thank you, Joanne. May I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2024-26?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-26 is now open. Anyone who would like to speak on 2024-26, please use the microphone.
How many vehicles is that? For which department? I mean, which department? Oh, yeah, well, how many for the fire department?
One.
What is it? Sometimes there are the fire in there. What is it?
Well, there's actually two, a Humper truck and a command vehicle.
And where's the others gone? Police. Police department?
Police, we're going to 10 police vehicles, but we are replacing, we're replacing 10 old ones that go back as far as 2003 that are pretty much falling apart.
10 of them?
Correct. We haven't purchased anything in two years.
I don't know. Seems like they're not planning on buying.
That's, Rita, that's the maximum. If everything was bought at the maximum price. Hopefully, the prices will be a lot less than what you see, the $3.5 million. And nothing can be bought without it coming back and us voting yes on it. So it would be an individual resolution. Well, you'd be surprised. Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2024-26 is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-26?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
No one has anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.